Pledge allegiance.
To the planet of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. And this is the meeting of the Board of Selectmen, Wednesday, March 20th, 2019. And, uh... Seven. Now I'm gonna make a motion to approve the agenda as written. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two sets of minutes to deal with tonight. And I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February 20th, 2019, as written. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, any discussion on that? Two. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of February 25th, 2019, as written. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
And once again, any discussion or correction?
Page three, uh, seven, under Mr. Buell's comments.
Yep.
Uh, should make Representatives Needleman and Haynes aware. It's Representative Haynes and Senator Needleman.
Oh my goodness, backwards.
Well, it just said Needleman and Haynes, so we just... That's all.
Okay. Any other corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Got a few pieces. This is from Candy Carl, Thursday, February 28th. "I just wanted to give a personal thank you to the Town Works Department," I guess Public Works, "for their attention to our dirt road, Sims Road, for the resurfacing, structuring, and correction of the flow of water across the road. It's been so nice not to have to wade through potholes of puddled water or ice, but keeping our dirt road just as that, a dirt road. I imagine it'll be... It will help the department immeasurably with plowing. I trust we'll cut down on the calls to the department for road repairs." Thank you to the staff and workers for... I thank... Thank you to the staff and workers who've done such a great job. Candy Carl, 31 Sims Road, East Adam, Connecticut. And another, a little more lengthy here. And this is to myself. "One Plains Road. Dear sir, I feel compelled to let you know that we think East Adam is a truly lucky... is truly lucky to have Officer Smith looking out for his residents. I'm in my 70s and recently decided to sell my motorcycle. I found and made arrangements for the buyer to come to my house. As the time for exchange approached, I began to feel very uncomfortable and very vulnerable. I contacted Officer Smith and told him my concerns. He suggested we make the exchange of bike for cash in a more public setting. He kindly volunteered to make himself present to ward off any possible problem. I contacted the buyer and told him to meet me at the Dunkin' Donuts," which he did. "Officer Smith made his appearance and everything went well. I can't begin to tell you how grateful we are to Officer Smith. My wife and I were under a great deal of stress prior to this sale, but Officer Smith's intervention and presence turned everything around and we were able to relax. It seemed to Officer Smith that it was a small courtesy that he extended, but to us it was so much more. I thanked him in person, but as I said, I wanted to let you know how much we appreciated him. Eileen and Robert Hines." That's a letter that we've seen the like of with Officer Smith before. And a third one from Russell Marth, First Selectman, East Adam. "Good afternoon. I just wanted to drop a quick email to tell you what a wonderful job Lisa Conroy, Park and Rec does. In fact, the whole group of PNR people I have met are all top-notch. Elisa certainly brings 100% attention to her job, so helpful, so diligent, and works hard. Couldn't find enough nice things to say. You should be glad to have her aboard, or happy that you do. Sincerely, Russell Marth, Deep River, Connecticut." I believe he comes over and plays pickleball at our gym from time to time. So it's nice to hear things like that. Okay. For the First Selectmen's report, just to bring to your attention, we have a new building official, Bill Todi. He's currently in Guilford. He will be coming onboard April 8th. Chatham Health, we had met over in Hebron, then here, to review a new director, candidates for that. And Russell Melmed will be taking charge at Chatham Health, April 23rd. He's currently with Ledge Light and will be coming over to us.
What's his name again? Emmett, I'm sorry.
Uh, Russell Melmed. M-E-L-M-E-D. And we did hire a temporary employee for Public Works, Justin Burick. He'll start March 25th. And he's there while one of our current employees is out on medical leave. And that's about all I have. And I don't have any responses to previous questions at this point, went through them. It seems that we answered everything at the time it was asked. So we'll move on to citizens' concerns. Do we have any citizens' concerns out there? Okay. Thank you. Unfinished business. East Adam Village Revitalization Committee. Okay. It was released on the 8th, uh, March 8th. And we do have a walkthrough scheduled for the 29th. That's coming up shortly. It's an open one. Anyone can attend that wishes to. Anyone who's interested in actually putting forth an RFQ for us to review, this is a mandatory walkthrough. They have to attend. And we'll be taking a attendance in order to determine exactly who was there, at least as far as the... Those who would like to submit an RFQ. One thing about it, anyone that attends, this is a opportunity to view, to walk through, but there's going to be no discussion of anything. We have to have a level playing field. We start answering questions for someone who might want to submit an RFQ. Everyone who's submitting RFQ has to hear those answers. So what we do is no discussion at all at that time. That's about all I have for that. Moving on, transfers.
It's a... Where is the final? We never got the final RFQ. Do you have it somewhere? Is there... Is it on the town website?
It's on the website. It's, uh, all the references, all the contacts.
Everything's on the town website?
Everything is there, 100% through the website.
Under RFQs, RFQs, under Selectmen's office. I had given you a final copy of the front pages, the 22 pages, at that... Your previous meeting. But what's on there is the... All the environmental stuff and all that.
So at our last meeting, you gave it to us? It was in our pocket?
No, it was at your packet. I think it was the meeting before that. But I... You know, it was right on there.
Okay. I'll go on there.
If you need another copy, I've got one over at the office.
Oh, that's okay.
Even all the attachments, if you wanna see all the attachments, they're all up there.
How many page total is it?
Oh, it's over thousands. You know, so I didn't come with a... I didn't come with a staff like that.
I mean, the Eagle Environmental is...
Yeah, we only got that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that thick. I wouldn't print it off right after it came out and probably shouldn't have, but I did.
I thought the version we had was still being finalized, so...
Okay.
I'll email you the link, make it easy.
Thank you.
Rob, any questions there? Okay. Moving on to the transfer station. They've got the door up on the back of the hopper. Gate is up, it's safe again. And we are using it again and we are submitting people with larger loads to go back there, unload in the back as they had done in the past. The one change is that there's no one in the bed of the truck or up above the gate on it. Last thing we need is someone falling off and going in there, so they... We need to be very careful. We're starting to work on the traffic flow. They're prepping the site so that we can do that. We will be submitting maps and a discussion of it to the East Adam News and having that published and make everyone aware of the fact of what we're doing. They're putting together signage, so we'll do that. And basically, that's your plan, Randy, that we're going to be implementing. That's... I think exactly the way you had drawn it, I had some thoughts on other things, but for the moment, it's gonna be exactly as you drew it. And it's a nice, solid idea. I think it's gonna make a big difference. Give us the kind of control we need up there to make certain that everyone is either permitted to be there, they've got a sticker, or that they pay whatever fees are appropriate. We'll have that kind of control. We are gearing up for the bag system. Everything takes longer than you think and... Or hope it will. But we are talking to Kristen Brown. She's in the area. And we're gonna be setting up forums and meeting with various small groups and organizations for that. Last night, here, we met with the haulers. The Economic Development Commission wanted to get together with the haulers and myself and just really talk out what their issues were, what they needed, what their concerns were. And we spent two and a half hours working on that, hashing it out. And I learned a lot and got more insight than I had thought I would. It was a good meeting. Any questions or...
So when is this... So we got recommendations like a year ago now? So when is everything gonna be done?
Hopefully by spring, by the end of spring. And, uh, you know, we've had a lot happen in that interim. The storm, the trees, and my own personal problems that have slowed things down. We're moving as quickly as we can.
Do you anticipate any changes from the recommendations? I mean, are the commercial haulers still...
They're becoming more antsy, and I think some of it is because of what's happened with Mira. A... From a practical standpoint, with the breakdown of their systems up there and the problems that they encountered, they're questioning where they're gonna be able to take their trash, their refuse. And they're starting to become a little bit more concerned about how it's gonna work. So...
Have you heard any concerns that they wouldn't be able to take it, say, to Essex or anything like that, or...
Well, Essex is Mira.
Yeah, that's what they...
Hartford. And the problem was that Mira had the... Trying to think what they call them. But their three units were all not working. They couldn't burn the stuff. And they were taking it anywhere and everywhere that they could imagine, at great expense. They're finally operational again, but now they're gonna pass along all those costs. And Essex is very reluctant in terms of accepting stuff at this point. They're not sure just where they're gonna go with it. So there's a lot of questions about whether or not they're gonna be available. And it's creating some concern. Moving on, citation hearing. We haven't done anything with that or the control of animals. I've gotta check with Jimmy and see where he stands with getting that together and having another public hearing on it.
Do you have a timeline?
I don't have a timeline for that, no.
Is it slowly coming back to the top?
Once we get the budget nailed down.
Okay.
Well, we're done with our part of the budget.
Well, yes and no. I believe I'm gonna be here tomorrow night with budget stuff. And I believe I'll be here Saturday all day and perhaps into next week, depending on how things go.
Right, aren't we all? But I'm just saying, I thought you said Jimmy's working on it. He's not involved in the budget.
Yeah, and I have to find out where he stands with that. And I don't know exactly where he's at with it. Moving on to new business. Rob, you've got the Sustainable Connecticut.
Right.
And I thought I'd turn that over to you and let you carry it.
So we're putting a group together. Some of the people that were... Are... Has indicated they might be interested in coming onboard, and I've reached out to... Are out of state right now or on vacation, whatever. Mark Henderson has said he might be interested. And there's some others. Candy Carl, with her background in the arts. So... And again, this is a... The Sustainable CT goes across just about every... Reaches into every facet of the...
So are you advertising for it?
No, no, not really. We're just trying to put together a team and then if we need specialized activities or interests, that we can pull other people in. And once we get go... Once we get going, the core people then will have... Reach out to see other people who are interested. So the... It's... People have to become aware of what the program is. So I'm gonna try and do...
Right.
Put together an article so people get an idea of what's going on.
Right, and then you should look for volunteers.
Yeah, additional volunteers, yeah. We have a couple people that are specific that I think would be helpful, but this is gonna be a thing where you're gonna have people coming in and out as the process goes along. But there will be a core group. And I've asked Ron Turner to be involved because a lot of it has to do with operations in the town and on buildings and energy savings and things like that. And I've also asked Mr. Ventress to be involved, and they both agreed.
Oh, right. But, you know, Mr. Ventress seems to be very busy, so I just wanna make sure that... And I thought we talked about this, isn't gonna cost more to the town, right? Like, so I know their time for the cost of the town. I just wanna make sure that we get volunteers.
Oh, yes, yes. We do have volunteers. And we're gonna have a lot of volunteers, I anticipate to... But it... We're trying to get it off the ground and we have to have a... There's a window where you have to get it all organized and operational, which is 90 days. So we're fast approaching that. And I do have one application. That is Candace Nero. I had spoken to her, see what her interest would be. Candy is... Was the Recreation Director at Chestelm for decades, probably. And has... And did a lot of work with the arts in the area and obviously with the... Our seniors. So she said that she'd be interested in working on the program and has applied. And they should have her application here. And that's the first of, like I said, which will be several volunteers. So there should be very little expense by the town on this project until we get to the point... Even... And actually, we can reach out for some... There's some grant money available for interns to work with us as we go through the process. And we'll be applying for those, hopefully.
So, but you are gonna... So how many people will be on the committee and...
I anticipate there'll be... Besides the two employees, Mr. Turner and Mr. Ventress, there should be at least six more people involved besides me.
And you're gonna advertise for those six people?
Yes, yes. Probably the best thing to do, and I think we mentioned this before, if not, I'll reiterate it, is that we put a little article in the paper about getting folks involved. Because this is, like I said, across the board. And just wanna get this thing up and going, so with some core people.
So are we voting on this?
So I'd like to make a motion that we accept Candace Nero for the Sustainable CT Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. How are you?
You.
And moving on to Kirma, commitment letter. And it's worth noting that we've been involved with this rate stabilization program since 2004. Kirma's our insurer. The way it's set up, it's 49% to the town and 51% to the Board of Education, so we jointly make use of them. This is a three-year commitment, and basically that makes us a member so that we get the equity distribution. This year, the equity distribution was $25,000. And the thing is, if you go out for bids, you immediately lose all that. If at any point in the three years, we decide that we don't wanna be part of it, we can just simply go out for bids and be clear of it again. We also, for 2019, '20, are gonna have a minus 3% over 2018, '19 premium. And if we're not members, it actually is a zero increase. So we're gonna have a negative increase if we stay with them. Good program, very, very good people. There's a letter there from John Bennett explaining some of it, I believe, attached to what you've got. And as I say, we've been doing this since 2004 and it's proven to be a true benefit for the town, a tremendous benefit. And on that said, I'm gonna make a motion to authorize the town to contract with Kirma for a three-year budget stabilization program for our liability auto and property, LAP, insurance for the period of 7-1 2019 through 7-1 2022. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we've got a letter from... From Deb Danette on the Cemetery Committee, and they're kinda looking for it to become more active, to be given a focus for it, and perhaps to have some of the responsibility turned over to them. At the moment, our Director of Operations has been maintaining that. They're doing a great job. We've got about $5,000 a year to work with, and we can see steadily improvements with it. I do think it's appropriate for the responsibility to be there, and I really don't wanna see any changes in that. But Ron, are you here somewhere? You comment on that, what you're doing and how it works?
The maintain of the 11 town-maintained cemeteries. Just trying to...
And... At this point, I'm not inclined to make any changes in what we're doing. And any comments or thoughts on that?
One of the questions, I think, is that... Been reading this a couple days ago, is that there is a... There seems to be some question about... And quite honestly, I'm not sure exactly what all the issues are, but it sounds like they just want a clearer charge and a clearer direction as to what they're expected to do, I guess.
I... One of the things that's come to me on it, and I've at a point where I'm giving it a little more thought than I used to, is we don't have an awful lot of space left.
Yep.
And I've already approached our land use and I... Department, Jim, and said, "What can we do about that? We really need to look into it and see what... We can create some more space." And he's already looking into that. He had some ideas when I talked to him. I think that perhaps himself and Prairie, who's planning his zoning, chairing that, and Deb could sit down and talk about it and just... To me, that's a useful purpose for the Cemetery Committee, to identify additional space. I think we're gonna need it.
So do you see them developing? Because a couple things. One, they said there should be at least five members, and there's just two. And that, you know, they don't have any real policies or anything, or bylaws, or any real written direction, best as I can determine, reading this.
So where's the original charge for the Cemetery Committee?
That's attached to what you've got there. And there is no charge. There never was a charge.
I was gonna say, I don't...
It was formed, I believe, what, 1970?
Okay, but there was no charge in this packet.
And it was kind of established at that point with no particular purpose. And to be honest, it really hasn't done an awful lot since then. As far as the maintenance of it and the upkeep, that falls within the purview of Mr. Turner and Director of Operations, his facilities manager.
So...
And does a great job of it.
So when it was originally developed, the Cemetery Committee in the 1970s, do we have minutes from then that, like...
Nothing more than what you see here.
Yeah, there's no charge. It just says, "We've established the Cemetery Committee to be composed of Harry Minor and Florrie and Chaya," so...
At that point, I think we were seeing a lot of cemeteries being turned over to the town. Whatever committees had run them and headed them up and dealt with them were fading out, and the thought was to just turn them all over the town. And I'm not sure if they were intended to receive them or just what role they played. Until we had a Director of Operations, facilities manager, we really didn't have a formal group maintaining them. Now we do.
Well, I can't speak for Mr. Turner, but it would seem like it'd be nice if he had a definite charge.
Well, it looks like the...
He's nodding his head that it would. So maybe it's something in which we should look further into, or maybe they can develop something that we could review.
Now, I... To be honest, I, you know, in terms of budgeting, the $5,000 seems to be adequate that we use each year.
How much question you have?
Yeah. I wouldn't think budgeting would be the most important thing for this committee. I think it's more about space and...
I mean, oversight, you know, just kinda keeping an eye on things and if they see something. And I think looking into additional space would certainly be something they might wanna do.
Perhaps they could make some concrete recommendations to us, what they might... What might be useful to move the committee and make it more... Understanding, again, of their charge, what they're expected to do and some... Give them some parameters.
I'll try to work with them.
Okay.
See what I can find.
Well, so they must have worked with inquiries on this, right, Flory?
Yeah. Well, they've had questions for a couple of years, you know, so...
And they must have worked on the plan of conservation and developed... Like, they must have been in there somewhere.
There's some discussion in there, but not a significant amount.
Not an awful lot.
I mean, we do have cemeteries. I mean, we have a cemetery, to the best of my knowledge, that no one's done anything with, the Town Farm Cemetery up there on, you know, the... There are no markers, it's totally unmarked, it's...
I mean, you have to know where it is to know it's there.
Yeah, it's a... And there's no boundary markers, there's nothing that indicates it's a cemetery, so... Apparently it hasn't been used since the...
Was it a town-owned one? Because out of the 23, only 10 are town-owned.
Yeah, it's... Page seven is the bottom of the Town Farm, so... And we do take care of others that are not ours. And then the Parker or Chester Cemetery is on private property. I think that's being taken care by the... By the Chiltons, so Chilton family there, so... And I think we're also taking care of one that's actually on private property, that is the one on Mill Road that's owned by Prairie, so...
Mm-hmm.
Emmett?
Owned by Prairie Cemetery?
So I understand that's owned by Prairie, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
I had no idea.
Do you have a...
Do I need another nod back there? Prairie's, Mill Road, that's owned by Brown Elk, correct? Yeah.
Um...
So we've been mowing it and taking care of it, correct?
Oh, no, all of them, don't we? Don't we take care of all of them?
Hmm?
Don't we take care of all of them, not just the 10? Ron? We only take care of those eleven, ten or eleven?
We don't do the Cove Road, I think that's taken care of by the Cove.
Are you missing, I'm missing a page, are you missing a page?
There's twenty-three or twenty-two actually in town.
Twenty-three.
No, twenty-three total.
I only have up to nine, and my next page is missing. So you're going to work with Prairie and getting
We'll talk about it and see what
Or Deb, or somebody.
It might be, you know, it might be good to get, there might be more interest, or might maybe people would be interested in getting on that, because I know Lime has done a great job of resurrecting, maybe that's the wrong word. Cleaning up their cemeteries and marking them, and with volunteers and people on a committee down there, so.
Well, we've done quite a bit of that.
Oh, yes, I'm not arguing that at all, but
But not through volunteers?
Yeah. So, I mean, if there's a larger committee, we might be able to get, gather more interest. Because I don't think people understand who or what group takes care of them in town, or when they're taken care of, or things like that, so. Linda, thank you for putting the packet together. Did you do with all the information?
No, Deb did that.
Oh, Deb did that, oh, okay, okay. Well, then, thank you, Deb.
I have a whole book on every cemetery and where they're located and all that, you're welcome to view it and
Okay, moving on. Board and Commission changes, we have one. And you got an email from Bob Kastner, Economic Development Commission Chairman, recommending changes. And Michael Ribado, we brought him up at the last meeting, and you wanted to see his credentials. And there you have it. His resume is attached now. Do you have a look at that, Rob?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to appoint Michael Ribado as an alternate member of the Economic Development Commission for a vacant five-year term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Again, this goes, just goes back into like the process and I, about how we find volunteers, right, and just making sure that we advertise and have, you know.
I don't think we advertise for boards and commissions, do we?
Yeah, sometimes I do.
Sometimes.
No, and I created a whole page on the website to tell people what vacancies there are and put a volunteer application there and
So there was, this was on there then?
I can't remember.
So, and I'm just asking because like, so people sometimes want to be involved, I think we should open it up.
Yeah.
So we don't have, always have the same people, I'm not saying he's already, I have no idea if he's on anything else, but he's fine for the position, I'm just saying we always need to
The more people get involved, the better.
Put it out there.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We have no tax refunds, so we're back to public comment again. Have any public comments? Yes.
I have a question. East Hattam has recently been in the news, both on Channel Eight and on our East Hattam newspaper, concerning the increased number of members that have, or no longer volunteers, who have to be ten, eleven people that have left the organization since January first. Our mutual aid has been increasing, and there's concern about public safety, about the expectation that when somebody calls nine-one-one, somebody will show up. Currently contracted out to a private, not pro-profit organization. The town is looking to add as a concern for public safety.
Yes, we have. We're examining it considerably.
What's the, do we have the process yet?
In here, and I've got a great deal of reading to do. We've been in touch with Stacy Durante, OEMS, talking to her about what the processes and what the options are.
At our last meeting, you were meeting with someone from Middlesex, I think, to talk about
Jim Santa Cruz.
Yeah, and what did he say with regards to our mutual aid and how, how we need to respond?
He said that the East Hattam Ambulance Association, and keep in mind that that is an independent corporate structure, that's not part of the town. It's no more related to town than Coca-Cola.
So what do they pay for rent here in our office?
Part of our contract gives them space. And we have, you are more than welcome, I've got copies if you'd like to look at this stuff. And made them up for you today, both of you. And you can read through and see just what's going on, and what our relationship is, and what the processes are. They'll be available, and as I said, I've started reading it, it's a lot, and it's very hard to understand.
So our agreement with them, so they, so I just want to understand, and we've talked about the agreement before, right? So we give them money towards a vehicle, and they have
No, we set aside money in order to purchase a vehicle.
Right, correct.
And then we turn that vehicle over to them for their use. We continue to own the vehicle. We don't give it away.
So, but in the contract, it also says they get free space in our town offices and our firehouse?
They have space.
And what about electric, gas, telephone, all that, is that spelled out in the contract, or?
I don't believe there's a great deal of detail on that.
So if they're a private company, they should be paying us for that? And it came, I think you brought it up to their attention, that the gas, gasoline has been an issue?
Gasoline was an issue because of the keys that you use to acquire the gas or diesel up at Public Works. And apparently, the keys, keys identify who it is and what the vehicle is. There's two keys, a black and a green. And apparently, they had become confused, and the wrong keys were being used. They, we know which keys were in the vehicles, they checked them, they've been able to identify which keys were being used. Dawn and Lynn, who is with the ambulance, are working back through that. It's anticipated that they will be paying us for the gas and the diesel that they used. It's going to take a little bit of bookwork, a little bit of paperwork, in order to come up with the exact numbers. But they are working on that right now.
So they are reimbursing us for gasoline?
And indeed, the concern came from the ambulance.
Right.
Well, we brought it up, we brought it up at our budget meeting, why they did not have, Rob, do you remember that? We brought it up at the budget meeting.
There was discussion about it, yeah.
So the concern didn't come from, well, maybe they came to you.
They came to us.
I think they identified it, and then it came up at our meeting, so we wanted to get it addressed.
Okay.
And this is something, she looked, she said, we didn't pay anything for fuel for this one for a year.
Okay, so, but back to the bigger issue.
Yeah.
So how long of a process is it? What did, what happened after that meeting with Middlesex? Where do we stand as to how quickly we have to fix our issue? Like, this isn't something we can sit on for a year, right?
And it's not our role to sit on it. Once again, we're contracted with them. They have a contract to live up to, and if they don't do it, we're going to be dealing with it.
But I thought they aren't, I thought that's why Middlesex, I thought that was why you said you were meeting with Middlesex.
Our mutual aid rates were becoming high, and they came down here to say, you got to do something about that.
And did they give us a deadline as to how quickly we have to do something, and why is this happening? Do we know why this is happening?
We can speculate on that, I'm not going to speculate here.
Okay, so, so what's, when is, what is our deadline for fixing our mutual aid rate?
I, you know, I really can't address that because we're simply buying a service. They've been instructed that they have to get it right.
But I thought we are, we are responsible for providing a certain level of service to our town. And I understand we're buying it from them, but if they're not doing it for us, we need to how long do we have to correct it in order to be compliant with what we're supposed to be providing to the town?
There's not a numerical thing, it's, it's reached a level of about twenty-five percent. And I think really you need to read these things to see what happens. One of the things that was explained to me by Stacy
Who's Stacy?
Stacy Durant, who works for OEMS and handles our region. And I said, Stacy, can I come to you and say that I want to change, that I need something different? She said, no, she said, it's built in there very carefully that you can't do that. Because we don't want a new first selectman who comes in, who's got a buddy, who he wants to turn it over to.
Okay, so how do you get it done then?
And, once again, it's in here, if you would take the time to read it and understand it.
So that's from Stacy, that's from Stacy for us.
No, no, this is Town of East Hattam, Local Plan of Emergency Medical Services, got to read that, there's the agreement.
I know, but I thought we, I thought, I thought you just said that they, this OEMS, whatever it is
Let me
They will, they determine how we can get it done.
Yeah. This is not the highlighted one. This is nineteen A, one eighty-one B, this is part of the statutes, the general statute. Performance standards. This is complicated enough, so I really need the highlighted version.
Yeah, I think it's in front of, I think it's before that, I saw something with highlights in a packet before that.
I see a lot of things highlighted in here, but not what I'm after.
So I guess I'm just asking
Here we go, pardon me. Performance crisis, that's what I was looking for. Responder has failed to respond to at least fifty percent or more first call responses in any rolling three-month period, failed to comply with the requirements of any corrective action plan agreement between the municipality and the responder. Unsatisfactory performance, that's, that was item two, this is three. Responder has failed to respond for at least eighty percent or more of the first call responses, excluding those responses excused by the municipality in any rolling twelve-month period, goes on and on. I got a lot of reading and a lot of understanding to do, to understand just what we can do and how we go forward with this. It's not a simple process, and there's, there are implications and problems.
I understand that's like, that's the agreement, so you're saying, is that the state statute?
This is state statute.
Of, okay, of our ability to break a contract with our ambulance if they're not responding?
We don't break the contract, we go, there's something called a PSA.
Yes, I know what that is.
And the PSA is issued by OEMS. We can contact them and say, we don't think they're performing up to standards. And then they will conduct an investigation, they will conduct the process.
Okay, so I guess my question is, when do we trigger that? Like, when do we think, so Middlesex came out here to meet with us, right, to you, with you, to say we have an issue? Okay, so now, when do we go to the next step?
I, you know, that really depends on what happens. There is a plan that's being put in place by East Hattam Ambulance Association to respond to this. They've spoken with Stacy Durant as well, who's the one who oversees it, has oversight over it.
And when are we going to have that plan? Because we can't keep going without not answering calls. So I guess I want to know when we're going to have, so if they're, they're working on a plan, are they here, do we know when the plan is going to be? Well, that's the volunteers, I think, over here.
Oh, Laurie, what's, can you respond to that?
Yes, I can. We have a plan in place that was approved by Middlesex Hospital and Stacy Durant. Involved changing the incentive program to incentivize the schedule instead of taking the call because Middlesex felt that we need a better schedule more than what we are. And then we're planning to hire EMS manager to oversee the operations.
What's that, are they going to volunteer too, are they going to go out on calls?
Did you finish?
I'm asking a question.
Yeah.
Well, are they also a volunteer, I'm just wondering how you're going to
No, they're not a volunteer, they're, it's a paid position. And then the other thing is hiring a staffing agency to supplement the volunteer force until we can hire our own, our own people to staff and move away from an actual staffing agency, but the staffing agency is the initial step that we have to take, just to staff our calls, because our volunteers are not signing up on the staff.
So you're hiring a staffing agency to take the calls?
Complement our volunteers where the schedule, where there's vacancies in the schedule. Middlesex's instructions were pretty clear that we need to fill our schedule. They didn't say decrease your mutual aid rate, they said, fill your schedule and your mutual aid rate will be decreased, we know that. We used to have an eighty-eight percent schedule coverage, and we had less than two percent mutual aid rate when we had a high schedule coverage. We no longer have that schedule coverage, so.
So when's this going into place?
It's all in process now, everything is going down the line right now.
So when's it going to be up and running? We need a date, I mean, this is, I get the calls all the time, one, first call, second call, third call. So when are you going to staff, when are you going to have the schedule in place, when are you going to have the staffing in place? What's the date, when's it going live?
We're meeting with the staffing agency this week, we're starting the interviews for the EMS director, and the attorney is reviewing the incentive program as we speak.
So what's the duties of an EMS director?
To support and train the operations officers, review the policies, get the training up to par, there was
I thought we had operations officers and people who did training, who are volunteers.
There's no, there's no course you can take that tells you how to be an operations officer, you do it by hit or miss, so.
So the ones we have now are not doing it well, is that why we're getting
The ones we have now are new, with no experience. And they did a survey, there was a survey and an organizational assessment that was done, and both of them identified that there were concerns about training and leadership. And one of the ways to improve things is to get this EMS position in so that we can bring our stuff up to par and be able to hire our own people so that we're not paying a staffing agency. An all-volunteer agency is not, in two thousand and nineteen, it may not be a viable thing to do. So we need to move to some different model, and we were given a bunch of different scenarios to discuss. We went through them line by line at one of our board meetings, and came up with this way to go.
What, how many employees do you have currently?
We don't have employees, we have volunteers.
Oh, so you pay nobody through your, through the ambulance association? No one gets paid?
They get paid for calls.
No, I'm not talking about people who respond, how many employees does the ambulance association have, is my question?
We have one person who is the service administrator that does all of the billing, QA, and takes care of working with the billing agency. You need that person in order to spot, and that's a part-time position.
Okay, so you just have one part-time position, and the person you're hiring is another full-time, part-time position? So you'll have two part-time employees total, employed people? So you're going to have an answer by next week then, of your staff?
We'll have a list in place by next week.
Okay.
Heart of its contingent on people signing up on the schedule, and right now, there's three people signed up on the schedule for the weeks, upcoming weeks. So we have to get more people on the schedule and fill the gaps with the staffing agency.
Laura, you said a minute ago that there's lack of experience, but lack of experience as technicians or as in management?
Operations.
Operations, okay.
I think someone else had their hand raised.
So I was at the meeting with Jim Santa Cruz last month, and he said to us that he wanted to see results by April, and he would be again in people to go over what has been
Okay, so there was a deadline given, okay, that's what I was asking, like, did he have So there was a deadline given, okay, that's what I was asking, like, did he have, was... So, April, he wants to meet again with...
To follow up on what was spoken about last month and what changes have been put into place because Middlesex being our medical control is very concerned about the number of calls that are going unanswered. And to speak to the private consultant that was hired by Eastham Ambulance Association last year, it was stated in their report that the current model will fail in the foreseeable future, and the current incentive plan is no longer really an incentive for volunteers. And they made five recommendations, one being to stay with the current model, which we see is not working. Two is to hire an administrative, which they put out a job posting for. But in the recommendation, it was stated that that person be able to crew primary and secondary calls. Although that's not in the job description that's currently posted, so no, that person would not be taking calls to ride service. The third recommendation was to contract an ambulance service, but that would likely require a financial subsidy from the town because it's very expensive, and it's not a long-term solution. Combining fire and medical services into one is something that a lot of towns have done, and they've had success with. That was also one of the recommendations that was made. And then regionalization requires a lot, so...
So, okay.
So, I have to say that I couldn't help but notice that there was, Laurie, you had, you were shaking your head that there was something stated wrong here.
Yeah, the decision about whether the EMS director actually rides or not has not been made. It's not in the job post thing, but there has not been a decision on that yet.
Okay, but it sounded like it when I asked you if they were gonna be also a volunteer or...
Could be a volunteer.
Well, I, I meant actually work in an ambulance. I don't know if I'd say it.
I didn't know that's what you had.
Okay, so you haven't decided that?
That has not been decided yet.
So the, that, that person can go out in an ambulance on a call?
Right, that's still under discussion.
So, April, when did you say that the follow-up is?
The date, I don't know, I'm not part of the initial invite when that email goes out, but I know he did state it would, they would be meeting again in April.
Do you have it on your, no?
We don't have a date yet. And Jim is going to contact us, we've been meeting multiple times, so...
Jim will send me an email and...
Let us know when he's available, see if we can be available, and we'll get together and talk about where we...
And he's from Middlesex?
He's a, Middlesex, yes.
So, you anticipate that we'll have some sort of an answer by our next meeting on April 3rd?
I hope so.
Because this is, this is an issue, especially if you're the patient looking for an ambulance, you know? And you're waiting for mutual aid from Lyme or East Hampton or Colchester or wherever, so...
No question about it.
And, well, I mean, you've stated this before, and I know you're aware of it, but you're ultimately responsible, so... I think that's in the statute, but wherever it is.
Trust me, I am, with what time I can find, looking into options and what... I, I need to be fully versed in what is possible, what we can do, what the options are. I am hopeful that this is going to work. Lacking that, then I better have some other answers.
You know, this is not the first time this issue has arisen. I mean, we looked at it 15 years ago, and at that time, to hire hunters to come in would have been $450,000.
And it's more now, I understand that.
Six hundred today.
Yeah, and so, so this is...
There are, there are better answers than that.
Yeah. But it does obviously need to be resolved in one way, shape, or form, so...
Right, and with all our budget issues, I think we should look at the contract also to see what we are...
You'll have a copy of it.
Okay.
So you said you already have them for us?
Yeah, packets identical with this one.
Okay, okay, so we can grab them after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right in my office, right there. Okay, anything else?
So I just wanted to clarify because I'm not sure what is being done.
I'm sorry?
Is there going to be a committee formed? Is there gonna be a public forum to address issues? What is the plan?
There's nothing scheduled at this point.
Would it be possible to propose that fire and ambulance join together under one umbrella with a separate medical division? I know that that proposal was submitted to you last month and signed by individuals? Was that being looked at?
I've read it, and as I said before, it makes it very clear that whoever wrote it does not understand the structure.
So can the structure give...
The structure of the ambulance and this relationship to this town. You know, I, I read it over and over, could not understand it, and tried to relate it back to what we have here.
Do we have a copy of it with our packet?
No, I can give you one if you'd like one. And you can compare it for your own purposes.
Okay.
It strikes me to simply arbitrarily relocate the ambulances. I can't do that. It isn't allowed by statute, it isn't allowed by anything. And there are other implications that, that you need to address and think about, and it's some pretty heavy ones to try to do that. So, I'm only beginning to really bring it all into focus. It's, it is a swamp.
I have a question. I'm Timothy Reynolds. I hear a statement about training. Been wondering about where the trainers were not doing their job. And I, I think that that's a big issue, and maybe we should look at, you know, why all this is going on and how we could subsequently have a training operations group that could do things, make things better without spending a whole lot of money. This town, you have two organizations that run EMS, and that is the fire department, R1. That means when the tone goes off, the fire department responds to their house. They are highly trained, highly organized group, ran, ran very smoothly, and they do a good job. I see that their training is pretty organized. So, and in our group, in the ambulance, there is multiple people with a lot of letters after their name that are able to train, including some of the board members. If those people would step forward and maybe help with that training organization, maybe we don't have to go down this road at a great expense of town. Maybe we can sit there and have some kind of sit-down talk with all the people with all the letters and sit down and fix this problem before it gets out of control. And the clock is not ticking for, um, April 3rd, it's ticking for today, okay? And each day that runs by without the ambulance responding is another day we're gonna have problems that it serves for our citizens, which I wonder, for anybody that knows me or has been around me, they know that I've been in this business for 40 years. This is an unbelievable problem right now. Problem needs to be fixed today. Staffing, if staffing's gonna go into place, it needs to go into place tomorrow. Can't wait for readings or anything else. Yeah, I think that's the important part of this whole talk tonight. We're not trying to step on anybody's toes, we're trying to get the problem fixed. But we need a lot of, you know, people that kind of don't wanna talk about that. All you need to do is sit down with your leaders, your fire chief, your ambulance chief, the first selectman, the fire chief, Valley Shore 911 Communication, and Jim Santa Cruz. You can sit down at a table, you can bang this out and fix it without going through all this other stuff. This, this problem is that everybody's talking about volunteers tonight, everybody's committee looking for volunteers. That's the way you should do it. Volunteers are important, it's important to this town, it's important to the youth. That's how we get our volunteers, we get it from the young people, okay? Anybody who has started in the fire department, ambulance, those people started when they were young. And you need to foster that and build that in a place where we can make this work, okay? And for someone just to turn away from that and not look at any other options, except hiring somebody to oversee training, okay? And do all the things operations already does, to get a staffing service to... Okay, and if you wanna look at Public Act 217, House Bill 5597, that'll specifically tell you that the municipality is the one that assigns the PSA, okay, the primary service area. And they need to take a look at that, and they're responsible for that. And there is action to take if you wanna change that. It is available, and I'm sure Mr. Durant can tell you exactly how to do it. That needs to be done soon, like, right away, today, tomorrow. I don't think waiting till April 3rd is gonna help. We're beyond April 3rd, we're, we're in the hole.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
Dave Barrow? You know, for the last six years, I've spoken to the board of selectmen, this one and the previous. As a paid staff member, as a president, rear firefighter, of problems in town, differences in the organizations. When I first started, the ambulance and the fire department hated each other. Fire department did hate it that the ambulances were in the firehouse. Now all of a sudden, they're wanting to be together. Because some of these members and some of those members get along now, and they see an avenue. They see an avenue to take over the ambulance, bill for service, put guys on 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, whatever it takes. So the whole mentality of the ambulance and volunteer fire department has changed over the last seven years. And now all of a sudden, it's a crisis. Well, some of the volunteers are not in it for the right reason. Some of the volunteer R1 in the fire department used to sign on as an R1 for the fire department and let that ambulance go mutual aid instead of crewing the ambulance, time and time again. My phone used to go off constantly. Is true what Mr. Reynolds said, the three organizations, the selectmen, volunteer fire department, and the ambulance do need to sit down together. Why all these people left the ambulance and followed some over to the volunteer fire department and think that's the answer? I don't know. Three organizations can get together, hash things out, I think there is an answer as well. But this crisis has been created. We fix, people involved need to step forward and work on it.
Thank you, Jake. Anyone else?
I just would like to state that no one sits and watches a call every two weeks. Everybody has jobs, family, and anybody that is ever available will respond to an 911 call. People would not ever sit and just allow a call to go each week.
Thank you. Anyone else? Rob? Sue? Okay.
So we're gonna discuss it, sorry, we're gonna discuss it at the next meeting, we're gonna have some answers. I just wanna make sure we're all clear, right? That's two weeks.
Two weeks. We'll discuss it again, we'll see where we stand.
We'll have a definite answer of how, what our requirements are for the town or for the state to look at the contract. We're gonna know what they've put in place.
I, I would suggest that you become familiar with...
Oh, I will, I, I, believe me, I've read a lot of it already.
Okay.
So...
And, we'll deal with that.
Okay.
So Mr. Reynolds' point is valid that we, the situation needs to be addressed now. But, there's a concern I, we all seem to have here, people in the audience and us, is how we got there and what we can do to correct it as soon, as quickly as we can, so...
That said, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting at 8:06.
Oh, we have a selectman's discussion still.
I'm sorry, I, that's what I was asking for, just...
Oh.
I thought there was nothing, go ahead.
No, I just wanna make a comment that I'm not gonna be at the Saturday meeting for the budget, and I just wanna make sure, since you both voted against having an additional police officer, you have a plan to show them of how it's gonna work?
Well, I won't be there either, so...
I'm all alone on that one, eh?
So, you know, again, I'm, I don't agree with your, what you did, and I don't know how you're gonna cover. And you did not adjust the budget for the overtime it will cause from what you did. So, I'm just saying, there was probably gonna be a lot of questions about it, and I'm assuming you'll have a plan for it.
Well, let's do the best we can with it, I can't say more than that. I mean, we still have a great deal of cutting to do, I think the Board of Finance is gonna have to do that. And if we can find money, then so be it.
Well, I think they need to, I don't think, there was a lot of strategy put into our budget as it is, so, I don't know.
Okay.
So you will keep a surprise of any scheduled meetings that are coming up regarding this prior issue regarding the ambulance?
I'll let you know what's happening, yeah.
Thank you.
I think that's all I had.
Anything else? Okay. Now I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn at 8:07.
Second.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.